It's seven o'clock. We will call to order the various meetings. Library, the Water District, the Redevelopment Agency, the Airport Authority, the Rail Authority, the Victorville City Council, Redevelopment Agency if I didn't mention it. Before we go forward with the formal agendas, as custom and habit of this council to begin every meeting, first with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Dane Davis of the First Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Girl Scout Troop Number 1475. May we stand.
Thank you, Mayor Caldwell. Let's pray. Father God, I thought many times that you could send down your angels and they'd do a lot better job of leading than I do. And Father, the City Council meeting is no exception. But you've chosen these individuals, Lord, these leaders in our city, to make wise and godly decisions tonight. And for that, I thank you. I thank you for their leadership skills, Lord. I thank you for their experience. I thank you for the intellect that you've given each one and the passion and heart they have for this city of Victorville. And so, Lord, I pray that tonight you would help them draw upon all those things as they face these various decisions on the agenda for tonight. And Lord, we pray that your Holy Spirit would be in this place, helping to guide their minds, their voices. May they be able to speak as they desire to, Lord, and preside over this meeting tonight, Lord, with honor, with dignity, and with respect for you and your word. Thank you, Lord, for these leaders. I pray for your blessing upon them tonight and everyone that will come to speak as well. Hence, in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Scout troop, come forward.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize an extraordinary person who did an extraordinary thing off-duty for somebody in another community that he didn't even know. Heroism comes in many forms, and every now and then, something happens that allows us to recognize somebody who's not only special, but has done something very special. Many of you, I'm sure, read the article in the newspaper about the off-duty fireman who saw a chance to make a difference and to enter a burning home and save some lives. And tonight, we're here to pay some special attention to that very special person. And as I'm getting through, I would ask that Brent Cannon come up. Brent? I want to read the City of Victorville proclamation, where as President Theodore Roosevelt once said, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The worst thing you can do is nothing." And whereas City of Victorville employee Brent Cannon, a firefighter, whom has served the citizens of Victorville since 2006, exemplified courage and compassion while off-duty when he came upon a burning Apple Valley home on July 12, 2008. And whereas his immediate assessment of the situation resulted in prompt action, assisting in the rescue of four children and a disabled man from the fire, and whereas Brent Cannon placed his concern for others ahead of his own personal safety, acting quickly in a moment of heroism. And whereas, had it not been for the contributing efforts of Brent Cannon, precious lives may have been lost. Now, therefore, I, Terry E. Caldwell, Mayor of the City of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the City Council in recognizing Brent Cannon for his valor and exemplary public service. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Victorville to be affixed heretofore this 17th day of June, 2008. We are proud of you and thank you for your service, not just to the City of Victorville, but to people in general. You are a credit to the department, you're a credit to the city, and most importantly, you're a credit to yourself.
In addition to his proclamation received tonight, the Victorville Fire Department put together a heroic effort plaque for Brent. It reads, "In recognition of Brent Cannon for your heroic efforts in saving three lives on June 12, 2008, we thank you, proudly presented by the Victorville Fire Department and the City of Victorville."
Before we proceed with the formal agendas, we have two special presentations that will be given tonight. Both have been admonished, and they've given assurances in return that in view of the Laker game, that they will be brief.[450.28][450.28](Laughter) So first up is the High Desert Resource Network. You don't have to run.
Well, you said.
It'd be brief.
I always do what you say. Good evening, Mayor Caldwell and Council members. For those of you that I don't know, I'm Vicki Nagel, and I'm the CEO of High Desert Resource Network. We are a nonprofit organization, and we are a support to the hundreds of charities and schools and clubs that serve our community. And we're very much like a specialized Chamber of Commerce, working to connect and train local nonprofits. Tonight, I have a couple of people with me that I wanted to introduce, and I'll just have them wave their hands. We have several, a couple of our board members. Nancy Jackson is here with Southern California Edison. And Tamara Torres, who I'm sure you all know, right here from the City of Victorville, serves on our board. We also have a couple of our advisors, Sue Robinson from the American Red Cross, Mary Lee Reese from Transitional Living Cooperative, and somebody you probably know, Pat Caldwell. And also, our Director of Resource Development, Debbie Cannon, is here. We're here this evening, we wanted to recognize our wonderful mayor, Terry Caldwell. And I'm going to read this so I don't mess this up. He recently ended his service with our Board of Directors. And I wanted to give everybody a little bit of background. Terry was one of our first five founding members of the Board of High Desert Resource Network. And he served at a time when the organization was just an idea. It was an idea focused on bringing nonprofits together and helping them collaborate and get stronger. And as one of the founding members, he laid the framework and foundation for our organization. And this foundation has created what now is really a vital community asset. We have more than 150 members throughout the High Desert. We strengthen hundreds through training, hundreds of nonprofit staff and volunteers through training each year. So through his involvement with High Desert Resource Network and with the city, Terry has really done so much, as we all know, to ensure that our community has a really bright future. And really bright future. I mean, some even say that our future here in Victorville is so bright that we're at the center of the universe.
That's true.
Sort of like a star. Well, we also think that Terry's a star. So what we have done to commemorate his service on our board, rather than just a plaque, we have had a star named after him. And it's in the Scorpius constellation, and it is named the Terry E. Caldwell Star. So in presenting this certificate this evening, we want to make it really clear, and we're proud to be the first people to officially say that not only is the city of Victorville, but Terry Caldwell is in the center of the universe. We thank you.
And, without water, none of this could be accomplished. And without water, that which has been accomplished would soon wither and die, and the future would not be bright at all. We are fortunate to have an agency dedicated solely to the issue of making sure we have adequate water resources, and that's the Mojave Water Agency. And both the Mojave Water Agency and the desert are lucky to have the manager that we have and the gentleman that will speak to us now, Kirby Brill, Mojave Water Agency.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other members of the council. Well, I feel a little dwarfed here tonight. You're making me follow a hero and a star, so I'll try and do what I can to keep up the momentum here. But yes, I have a brief presentation. Matter of fact, I have a Laker version of my presentation that's even briefer. But before I get into it, I do want to acknowledge the great work of Councilman Hunter and through the Ad Hoc, Water Ad Hoc Committee that the city has put together. Through the last, what, two or three years, I believe, it's been a very powerful opportunity for a lot of interest to get together, to communicate and coordinate, and identify challenges we have. And it's really been a great asset to not only the city, but also the entire community. He's done a wonderful job of bringing a lot of diverse interests together, and I think we're well on the road to solving some of our mutual problems together. So with that, and through that venue, we have discussed this project a lot and how it was evolved and the different benefits there will be to the community, not only to the city, but other cities in the Victor Valley as well. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, I'm just going to hit some of the high points. Basically, what this slide is intended to do is demonstrate that this project wasn't created in a vacuum. It wasn't created by Mojave Water Agency, where we went into the back room one day and came out and said, "Okay, this is what needs to be done." This was initiated over five years ago as part of a stakeholder-driven process that was essentially developed through our Technical Advisory Committee, which is a group of stakeholders, including the city and other cities, and basically anybody that was interested got together, identified the challenges, and identified this regional recharge and recovery project as one of the many elements in the portfolio. The project was prioritized and was part of a successful grant application where this community was awarded $25 million. The majority of it will be dedicated to this project. So it was really a community effort. The project was born. It was born as a regional project, and I want to move into that pretty quickly through here. This slide right here shows kind of a, there's a lot going on in the map here, but essentially, the Mojave River is shown on the right-hand side, and the major element, or one of the major elements associated with this project is bringing in imported water, recharging along the river, storing it in the underground aquifers, and then through a series of new extraction wells that are located to be able to capture that water that's brought in, imported and stored underground, within being extracted and delivered to areas both east to the Apple Valley area and west along a pipeline that really kind of straddles the communities of Hisparia and Victorville. And there's opportunities, or the project concept includes opportunities to deliver that water to a number of existing reservoir sites and a number of existing places where it can be brought into the different water distribution systems. And through a couple of potential wheeling agreements, that water can eventually be wheeled all the way through into the cities of Adelanto and help serve the areas of SCLA, in addition to Hisparia, Apple Valley, Eastern Apple Valley. So there's a number of different communities that benefit. It was designed that way from the very beginning. There's kind of been a little bit of misinformation, I believe, out in the community that this project was really designed for the benefit of one community or another. I can stand here and say that's definitely not true. That was never the intent, and that's certainly not the agency's intent, to carry this project forward, just to kind of a one-dimensional beneficial project. It's really meant to be a regional project. And to illustrate that, it's a little bit hard to see it here, but here's all the different communities and different points. Again, Hisparia, Victorville, Baldy Mesa County Service Areas, SCLA, Adelanto, Apple Valley, Eastern Apple Valley. A fundamental component of this project, as I mentioned earlier, is the storage component. And this is what is so vitally necessary, especially in light of what's going on with the state water project today. I think, I believe today, we're at a down to a 30 or 35 percent allocation from the state water project. There's presumptions that that could even be worse next year. The governor, you may have heard, has declared a state emergency for, I believe, nine Central Valley counties. And by having this incredible asset that this community has, our underground storage, if we leverage that asset, we're going to be very well-prepared, just as we are today, to weather these anti-storms, if you will, or these droughts that we're beginning to experience. So the main goal is to bring in imported water, store it, and then later recover it. There's also been a lot of discussions about water quality. This is kind of a technical graph here, but basically, I think the message is that we have been, over the last, more than the last decade, we've been bringing over state water, bringing into our area state water, project water. It's by all means throughout the state considered as an extremely high source of supplemental water supply. Matter of fact, if you go to almost any area within the state, they look at this supply as, in many cases, a mitigation supply for poorer quality water. So it's an extremely high source of supply, and we will continue to deliver that high source of supply as an imported, yes?
So as long as we're under that yellow line, basically, we're meeting state standards? Is that what that?
Yeah, that's, it's a state standard, but it's also important to understand what kind of standard that is. It's a secondary standard, where secondary standards are non-health standards. They're aesthetics, they're taste, color, odor. And totals is all solids in this graph, it's a taste issue. And typically, you begin to notice the taste around 500. It becomes pronouncably noticed about 1,000, and it becomes near impaired at about 1,500. And so there's three different standards. So it's a non-enforceable secondary standard, so it's, again, it should never be considered as a health, it's not going to cause cancer, that kind of thing. But it is a state and federal, what they call a secondary standard. But that is a target where the Regional Board would look at and start considering it being impairing beneficial use. So it's a goal marker, if you will, but not one that would impact any kind of health issues. Okay, just a little bit of where we are, we've been, as I mentioned, we received the $25 million grant, and that really kicked off this process. It gave, I think, everybody the necessary comfort to move ahead. The Board initiated over a year ago a design process. We have a consultant, RBF consultants. Matter of fact, I think the same consultants that are working for the city in some capacity out at the base, they're working on putting the design basis together. A big part of that design effort is stakeholder input, to make sure that we got the right flows, we got the right size of turnouts, we were connecting properly. So there's been that kind of engineering stakeholder input. We're going to continue that as we move forward. We've effectively completed all the Sequo compliance that's necessary for the project. There's just some mitigation measures that we'll have to implement, and some of those are already being implemented, such as additional monitoring wells. We'll be working through some initial permitting coordination, primarily a lot dealing with Hisparia, because most of the pipeline's going to be going through the Hisparia area. We're just now completing some of the groundwater modeling to make sure that at ultimate capacity of the project, that water can come in and be stored and be taken out without any adverse effects. We're now in the process of finalizing our basis of design report. We have a draft report out, and we're beginning to make another loop back around with the stakeholders. I believe we have something scheduled with the city water and engineering staff, I believe, in the next couple of weeks. We've already met with them, we've been meeting with them, and we'll have another opportunity to get their final comments on the basis of design report. And this basically, the basis of design report, once complete, will provide the foundation to begin preparing the necessary design documents that will be bid-ready. We're also working to secure additional local funding. The agency has committed funding to make this project happen. I'm under authorization by, or I've been requested, guided, directed, if you will, by my board to seek additional local funding. We've been having some very preliminary discussions with all the stakeholders, including the city, on how we might configure that. And, oh, well. And then we move into the preparation of the final bid documents, and I believe we're looking to have those basically completed towards the end of the calendar year with the intent of beginning, going into construction at the next calendar year. So beginning construction early '09 to spring '09, somewhere around there is the target. With that, I think I'll just, oh, there we go, we got that. And I'm just going to leave with a couple of summary slides. I'm not going to read through those. These are just kind of highlights, overviews of most of the things I've already said. But at this point, I'm going to cut it off. And if there are any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those. I look forward to continuing to work with your staff, continue to discuss the project in the Ad Hoc Committee, and continue to value our partnership that we have with the city.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
The comment I'll make is thank Kirby for the great work he's done on this, and their board for putting this forward. We've got a lot of other things we need to continue on doing, and we'll have an Ad Hoc Committee meeting here in the next couple of weeks for water conservation. But we, as a community, but also as a region, have been proactive on this measure. And if you see, that's what's going to happen with this community as opposed to the rest of the state, who's getting some real problems on water. We're looking forward to saving our water and having that water for the future, and I think that's, we're on board with this. I believe the whole council's on board with this project. I believe we've got the other communities pretty much on board with this project.
I think that's safe. I'm doing what I'm doing here tonight. I have done that with some other communities, and a couple of others are planned, so yes, that's, and again, I think primarily through the work of the Ad Hoc Committee, that's been a very important tool to bring everybody together.
Well, this is a project that really has to get done, and I think we need to push it for our community out there, and we'll get with the other council members, because we can't afford to go in a drought situation as other communities have.
Absolutely.
So Kirby, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that you have one of your directors, the director that represents the City of Victorville. Michael Page is in the back. Mike, did you give him these directions and these orders he was referring to?
Of course.
Did you have anything you want to add as the director for Victorville? We're very fortunate to have him. This is not a public dialogue, but there is a gentleman, apparently, who wishes to ask a question.
Yes.
Could you please come to the podium and give us your name and who you represent?
Yeah, my name is Al Alderedi. I've been here 38 years. They had a proposition, maybe we're going to take water, put wells in at the head of the Mojave by the dam and ship it out to Baldy Mesa. Is that project still going on, or, you know, for development out there? They needed water, they were going to build like millions of dollars worth of pipeline to take water.
I'm not aware of that project, Mr.?
Are you aware of it? I mean, they're supposed to take, put wells in and take water to Baldy Mesa so they can develop Baldy Mesa. And I was just wondering if you're going to take the water out and send it, then replenish it and charge us for it. That's going to happen?
If you know.
If that reference is possibly to this project, as I stated earlier, there's no one single entity that's ever been singled out. This project is intended to benefit and provide supply to the entire Victor Valley, all the major water purveyors, and to provide a stable, sustainable source. So, no, I've never been aware of any project that was designed or to be implemented for a single-purpose agency, and that's certainly not what this is about.
Well, that's consistent with my knowledge. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Brill, Mr. Page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Keep up the good work. Okay, that is the non-agendized items. Item one on every agenda, that's the Water District, the Library District, the Airport Authority, the Rail Authority, the Redevelopment Agency, and the City Council. Item one on each of those is what is referred to as public comment. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state statute for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the City Council or the City Council sitting in its representative capacity for any of the agencies which I just mentioned. You can address us on any subject that is within our scope of responsibility. We do not know what you're going to say to us, so as a general rule, we do not respond to public comment. If you are going to address us on public comment or later in the meeting under public hearings, we ask that you fill out these white cards that are available in the foyer. That way, we will have the contact information necessary to communicate with you should what you share with us require that we schedule this for a future council meeting, or that we need to provide you with information or request additional information from you, we'll have the ability to communicate with you. So under public comment, item one, I have three cards, and I will call the cards in the order that they have been presented to me. And the first card is Dorothy Miller.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Dorothy Miller. I don't like your idea of putting all the money for different departments into a general fund. It's just another way of subsidizing without the people knowing about how much you are spending, like the golf course and anything else. And this council doesn't care how much they are spending, because it is only the people's money, not yours. As with our fire department, the cost with the city was a lot less than going with the county. And there are three council members here that didn't know how to do their math correctly. This is not right. This is not right. One more thing. I seen an article in the paper today and boy, was I glad to see it. It says the city of Victorville needs to get Jim Cox back. And I thought that was wonderful. We need somebody here that's going to do things right. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, the next card is Alvaro Alderedi, but it indicates a question on the water system. I don't know if we've addressed that for you yet or not.
Well, this was a separate, this was a separate issue. Because you just took over the Water District, you know, and I've been paying water here for 38 years. Since you just started, I'm familiar with you and everybody else has been on the council. So I've been here since 1970. And what bothers me is when you took over the water company, in the beginning, I had a broken water meter. Truck ran over it and I had trouble getting somebody to come out and fix it. 20,000 gallons was spilled before that you fixed it. They put on my bill and I says, hey, I didn't run over it, they took it off, that was corrected. But that's not the, that was just how I got my first experience with you guys last week. But now that you got your new department, everything, excuse me, everything's in there. It's okay. I mean, hopefully it'll work out. But what bothers me is that in the old system with the Victor Valley Water District, we got to vote for the Water Board members to select them. Now, I understand that you are the Water Board now, so does that mean that the people that are paying the water bills don't have a voice in the direction of the water company and the things that the water company is doing? How do we, this is the only way I have right now is to come and talk to you about water problems, you know? I haven't been in this place for years. I've never been in this place. The old place, I've been down on the other one with Judge Johnston and Tony Piazza down on 8th Street in the beginning. But this, I think there needs to be something done about the people that buy the water, you know, around here on this, have a voice in the water company. And I also...
Although I'm going to break my cardinal rule and I will respond to you on the point that you've raised, which is, you know, do we get to vote? And the answer is you do. You now vote for the City Council at every election, which is every two years.
I've been doing that ever since I've been here.
So you will have a direct say through the vote process, or the voting process, on who makes decisions about the water because it is now decisions made by the City Council.
All right, that was the one thing, that problem I was wondering about. The other one was my water bill. We pay a $14 or a $13 basic fee for your water, but that doesn't provide any water. That's just, that's just, you can put my name in the computer, all of us is named, all of us. I think there should be a certain amount of water given to a household for that fee, whatever it is. It could maybe increase the fee a little bit. I know, I'm on a fixed income.
I'll make you this deal, Mr. Alderedi. You send me a letter explaining what it is you think should be corrected. I will get that to Reggie Lamson, who runs the Water Department for us, and we'll get you a response. There is no way I could respond to that.
Right, no, I'm just bringing it up because I think that there's a problem, I think that it's not right for us to pay.
You're way beyond your three minutes. You've got two questions.
I knew that was going to happen.
So thank you.
All right.
Richard Barth.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmen, anyway, my name is Richard Barth. My, I had an occasion to deal with the code enforcement here. They're doing a great job, but I just find that I had a little problem. And they said that they have to send out five notices to let people know that their yards are overgrown and stuff like that. I believe that three are very sufficient. You know, if your weeds get this tall, I think, you know, three notices should tell you, that would save the city some money on paperwork and man hours. This is all I have.
Well, Mr. Barth, I would agree with you, although I'd take it one step further. I think one notice ought to be sufficient. Unfortunately, there are all kinds of state regulations and constitutional protections for people and we are forced to comply with the notice requirements under the government code and other provisions of state law. So while I share your view that we ought to be able to move a lot faster, we're having to comply with the law. It's not our ordinance, it's state law.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's all the cards I have indicating a desire to speak under public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who had intended to speak under public comment that failed to turn in a card? No, you've been there twice. That would give other people a chance. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the council under public comment that failed to turn in a card? And that concludes the public comment section for this agenda. And we will now go to the Library Board of Trustees. I will turn that over to Mr. Hunter, who's the council's liaison to the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item one's been taken care of. Item two, if there's no revisions to the agenda, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Item three, which has two items, A and B, which is the May 6th and June 3rd minutes of the meeting.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second, may we vote? Well, there we are, may we vote?
Mr. Councilman, one more.
In?
Yeah.
I don't have a vote screen anymore. Ms. Almond said she'd vote for me. Well, we'll have to do it by oral vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carried unanimously. That concludes the Library Board. Mr. Hunter? We will go to the Rail Authority Agenda, item three. First off, we'll go to item two. There are no revisions that I'm aware of to the Rail Authority Agenda, is that correct?
Oh, there are none.
Then, item three is the Consent Calendar. Approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see it on the board. Still on there. We still down? I don't have a vote screen.
I recorded it already, everybody voted. Second. Where we?
So the audience will know we have a brand-new electronic, highly sophisticated technical system and it's clear that we're still learning. We'll have to vote orally, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? That concludes the Rail Authority Agenda. We'll go to the Airport Authority. Again, I am not aware of any revisions to the Airport Authority Agenda, is that correct?
No revisions.
Then we will go to item three, which is the Consent Calendar. Approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ah, we got a voting screen. Unanimous. Item four is a request to consider proposed Resolution SCLAA 08009, which if adopted, would authorize a continuing appropriation and expenditure for the budget based upon the fiscal year 2007, 2008. I would indicate to the audience that this same item appears on the Redevelopment Agency Agenda as item five, on the Water Board Agenda as number four, and on the City Council Agenda as number 11. With Mr. DeBortnowsky's concurrence, I will handle all of those at one time with this motion.
That'd be appropriate, given the way you've introduced them.
Move for approval.
Been moved and seconded, may we vote? Unanimous. Item five is a presentation of requests to authorize the Executive Director to award Phase One of SCLA's security upgrade project and accept an FAA grant for 90% of the cost of the project. Questions or comments from members of the Airport Authority?
Second.
Moved and seconded, may we vote?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. That concludes the Airport Authority Agenda. We will now go to the Redevelopment Agency Agenda. We do have revisions to item six. Revision has been provided to us in writing. We'll discuss it when we get to item six. Item three is a public hearing to hear arguments for against proposed Resolution R08006, which if adopted, would approve the third-year implementation plan for the old downtown, midtown redevelopment project. Questions or comments from members of the Redevelopment Agency? Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Unanimous. Item four is the Consent Calendar. Been predetermined to be routine, non-controversial, these items will be adopted with one motion, thus there's a request for a removal.
Second.
Moved and seconded, may we vote? Unanimous. Item five is the item we've already done, handled a minute ago, which dealt with the continuing appropriation. We'll go to item six, proposed Resolution R08007, which if approved, would approve the owner participation agreement binding between Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Dr. Pepper, Seven Up Inc. This is a companion item to several items that'll come up later in the City Council Agenda. So we will package those all together at this point in time. And let me tell you what the other agenda, well, you, what are the other agenda items?
16, 17, and 18, I believe, on the City Council agenda.
We will handle 16, 17, and 18 concurrently, from the City Council Agenda, concurrently with item six. Mr. Metzler.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm pleased to present to you this item that involves an owner participation agreement binding between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and it's actually the Dr. Pepper Snapple Group. Very generally speaking, this agreement, along with the others, constitutes a transaction that supplements Dr. Pepper's project investment in Victorville. Very generally speaking, this agreement supplements the real estate transaction. They have worked out with Sterling where Dr. Pepper is actually proposing to acquire about 55 acres of property and build a manufacturing and distribution plant for the production of their product. The agreement, the OPA, also includes a ground lease agreement that involves having to lease property that's currently owned by the airport, which will subsequently be transferred once we can get the clearance to actually transfer that property and fee to Dr. Pepper. Accordingly, the staff report actually denotes that the compensation associated with that payment for the property is $4.75 per square foot. That's actually an error in the staff report and what's included in the agreement is actually the correct number, $4 a square foot, which is what Dr. Pepper is paying for the property. The project, in exchange for the substantial commitment of Dr. Pepper to construct the plant, the agency is committing an amount of infrastructure assistance to basically provide public infrastructure to the site. It also requires the city to deal with wastewater discharge from the plant, which is the reason for the subsequent agreements involving the design, construction, management of an industrial wastewater treatment plant. All of these agreements, staff is requesting that they be approved subject to minor non-substantive changes. For all intensive purposes, that includes risk management-related issues and making sure that risk management is comfortable with the insurance requirements. Also, with respect to the wastewater treatment and capacity agreement, there is a specific requirement that we identify or separate out in the rates that are established for Dr. Pepper, a differentiation between the capital and the user charge. So with that, because this project represents your goal in attracting well-paying, diverse jobs to this community, staff is recommending approval. I do have members from Dr. Pepper here to speak and in fact have a very brief presentation for them so that they can give you a little bit more particulars about the actual plant operation. Subsequent to that, we also have Al Curran, our design engineer, to also provide a brief presentation as to what the plant design is going to entail, if you so desire. So if appropriate, I'd like to turn it over to Kendall.
While those individuals are coming to the podium, would you or Andre DeBortnowsky please comment on the revision to item six in the RDA, just for the record?
There are two revisions to the proposed owner participation agreement, Section 3, Paragraph C. There is going to be some language, it still needs to be revised with respect to the rates for electricity in order to grant basically the city more flexibility. And also, we are going to need some additional revisions with respect to the completion dates of the project. And as Keith pointed out, in connection with the funding or the costs of providing the water treatment, the water wastewater treatment component, there will be differentiation specifically between the connection fee amount and the user fee amount, which will be still revised into the agreements.
Well, we do have guests all the way from Texas, so whatever order you have prepared yourselves, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to introduce myself, my name's Kendall Yorn, I'm Vice President of Engineering for Dr. Pepper Snapple Group. I would like to introduce two gentlemen here with me this evening, Eric Gold, who is Director of Engineering for the Southwest Division, and Greg Artkop, Director of Corporate Communications. We were a little bit confused earlier on about basketball, coming from Dallas, that seemed to end in April for us, so I'm not sure what game's going on. Before I start, I'd also like to thank...
Well, the way the score is looking, it's going to end for those of us who are Laker fans in just a few minutes.
Before I start, I would also like to thank Keith Metzler and his economic development staff for all their hard work over the last 15 months. I think you guys can be proud that they have a can-do attitude and exhibit a level of professionalism that the city of Victorville can be proud of. Let me start by just giving you a brief introduction to who we are at the Dr. Pepper Snapple Group. On May 7th of this year, we were demerged from Cadbury Schweppes, creating the Dr. Pepper Snapple Group. We're listed on the New York Stock Exchange under the symbol DPS. We're an integrated beverage business that markets more than 50 beverage brands to consumers throughout North America. We're based in Plano, Texas, and employ approximately 20,000 employees. We operate 24 manufacturing facilities and more than 200 distribution centers across the United States, Mexico, and Canada. We have a portfolio of strong brands, including Dr. Pepper, Snapple, Sunkist, Seven Up, Canada Dry, Mott's, Hawaiian Punch, Schweppes, A&amp;W, Squirt, Clemato, Penafiel, and a lot of other ones that aren't shown here, such as IBC, Stewart's, RC, Diet Right, Nihai, and Mr. and Mrs. Teas. Eight of our 12 power brands are number one in their category. Dr. Pepper is number one in its category and actually defines the category. Sunkist is the number one orange. A&amp;W is the number one root beer. Squirt is the number one citrus. Canada Dry and Schweppes are number one and number two in the mixer category. And we have the number two lemon lime with Seven Up. When you put all that together, we have six of the top 10 flavored carbonated soft drinks, making us the number one flavored carbonated soft drink company. We're also leaders in premium teas, juices, and sauces. Our Snapple brand has a lineup of premium teas, juices, and functional waters. Mott's is the undisputed leader in applesauce and multi-serve apple juice. Hawaiian Punch is the leading fruit punch in the United States. And Clemato is the leading vegetable juice. Overall, we're number two in the juice aisle of the grocery store. With this large portfolio of brands, it's no surprise that we need a manufacturing footprint to produce and distribute our wide range of products. In order to optimize our manufacturing system, we'll be implementing a five-hub strategy. We'll have five large plants in key geographic areas, medium-sized facilities in the seams to reduce distribution, and small and specialty sites in key locations to support innovation and lower-volume, high-margin items. This five-hub strategy will also optimize our transportation system and will allow us to source orders that are closer to the customer, replenish our distribution centers via lower-cost intermodal transport, and will provide comprehensive manufacturing capabilities in five major regions. If you take everything I've said and lay that out on a map, here's what it looks like. The blue markings show our medium-size and specialty plants. The larger yellow triangles represent our five-large hub plants, which will be major distribution centers and manufacture the comprehensive range of products. If you look at the five-large hub plants, they're in Aspers, Pennsylvania, Northlake, Illinois, Jacksonville, Florida, Irving, Texas, and hopefully soon, Victorville, California. Our proposed facility in Victorville will total approximately 850,000 square feet on 57 acres. It will consist of a 550,000-square-foot distribution center, 275,000 square feet of beverage processing and filling. The beginning proposal starts with five filling lines and will be expandable to eight filling lines, 25,000 and 25,000 square feet of administrative space. Initial employment will be approximately 200 people, including managers, supervisors, mechanics, lab techs, forklift operators, and other skilled labor. This is a rendering of the facility. I'm not sure there'll be that much green in it when we build it, but that's what the facility looks like. On the front end, you have the offices and employee entrances. You then go into the production facility and back into the warehouse. Here's a view of the main entrance to the building. Our plans call for the facility to be fully operational in the early part of 2010 with construction commencing this fall. One thing that we pride ourselves on at Dr. Pepper Snapple Group is being a part of the community in which we build our plants. Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, through its one-day's-pay volunteer program, offers employees the opportunity to give a workday to activities that benefit the community. We're also, through our Seven Up brand, the oldest corporate sponsor of the Muscular Dystrophy Association and have contributed over $35 million since 1973. Dr. Pepper was also a founding sponsor of the Hispanic Heritage Foundation. We continue to offer scholarships through that program. Appreciate the time that you've given us this evening. I'd like to thank all of you for your consideration. We at Dr. Pepper Snapple Group look forward to being a part of the Victorville community. Thank you.
Would you be offended if I proposed an ordinance in the city of Victorville, you can only drink these kinds of beverages?
I'll let Greg answer that one.
That's okay. My husband drinks enough for Dr. Pepper.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
Actually, I have probably the longest relationship. Mine goes back to 1958. I had my first stock. Stock was Dr. Pepper. That was the very first one. My dad was in the investment. So he said, "Son, you're gonna have to buy some company stock. What is it you're gonna buy?" Dr. Pepper was one of them. You had a hot drink back in the East someplace that was moving about the late 1950s, early 60s that moved the company very wide, tripled my money that time. So I go back a long ways with Dr. Pepper.
Other questions or comments?
I think the project speaks of the vision that we have for the city of creating jobs.
Okay.
Anybody else? Well, I had the good fortune of having dinner with them, so they already know how I feel. But you have a whole cadre of folks here. Is anybody else want to make any comments to the council? The game's in the toilet, so we're not... We're no longer concerned about time, so...
Fair weather, friend.
Well, welcome to the city of Victorville. We are excited and enthused about your decision to locate here and continue to provide whatever source of materials and support that you need that we can. We will ride Keith hard to make sure he stays on top of this project. And if anything I can do, any member of the council, if you have any glitches in the process, don't hesitate to let us.
Thank you.
Don't want to stay for the rest of this nonsense. You're welcome to go catch your airplanes and go home. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Keith one question.
Sure. Keith?
Keith, nothing about the project, I think, is wonderful. On the sewer treatment plant, Keith, is this going to be strictly for this project? Or are we going to have it large enough to accommodate other projects?
Correct. It is going to be large enough to accommodate other projects. We actually had an illustration, if we could put that up, to maybe give kind of an aerial perspective of kind of what's planned. But we, as a result of this project, I mean, really what initiated this project was the Dr. Pepper plant. They have a wastewater discharge that is very highly concentrated, so much so that when we looked at alternatives to deal with it, including the VVWA and even the city of Adelanto, just the way their rate structures, both on usage and on capital connections, just made this food user's requirement inefficient from a cost perspective. So it did cause us to design a plant, first addressing their needs so that we can deal with their wastewater cost effectively. But the plant currently hasn't been pinned down the exact sizing, but right now it's intended to be about 2.5 million gallons a day of capacity. And reserved for Dr. Pepper's use would be about 900,000 gallons. So we are building enough capacity into it to not only handle additional users at the airport, but also domestic flows as well. The photograph is above, or I'm sorry, on your screens above me, just for perspective. The Dr. Pepper plant will be located along the west side of SCLA. And what we're proposing to do is build two lines, which are the green lines, traversing northerly to the former Adelanto sewer line, which was previously used to discharge their waste to the VVWA plant. We would cite this plant. It's just off the north of the page, but it's basically on the airport, within some of the airport parking area currently. And then from that point, some of those other lines kind of reflect our reclaimed water plan, where we would actually reclaim the water, use it... Here's an illustration of where the plant is. Use reclaimed water. Principally, the plan is to send that water to VB2 and use that to cool the towers for the power plant.
Further questions or comments? Then, from the Redevelopment Agency's standpoint, Agenda Item 6 is proposed Resolution R-08007, which if adopted would approve the OPA with the revisions that are before you. And then on the City Council Agenda, Item 16, if approved, would award a contract to Cooley Construction for the low bid of $42,230,000 for the authorization facility, the grading, and the utilities, along with an EDA grant.
Correction, Mr. Mayor. Items 17, 18, and 19 are the companion items.
Yeah, I'm going through them one at a time.
16 is not a companion.
16 is not a part of it, I'm sorry.
Oh, it isn't. 17, 18, excuse me. 17, 18, and 19. 17, if approved, would result in the capacity and treatment agreement with Dr. Pepper Snapple. Item 18, if approved, would approve the professional services agreement for design and operations, maintenance, related services, and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $1,600,000 to Woodward and Curran, Inc. And 19 would be the approval of the construction management agreement with Benham DB, Inc., causing the construction of the Southern California Logistics Airport Wastewater Treatment Facility and appropriating an additional funds in the amount of $3,750,000. Are there any questions or comments regarding those four items? Not a motion for all four would be in order. Moved. Is there a second? Vote? That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome to the city of Victorville, and we'll see you soon. Last item on the Redevelopment Agency Agenda is Item 7, which would authorize the Redevelopment Agency to enter into an affordable housing agreement with Avalon Residential LLC and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $1,800,000 from the housing set-aside funds. Questions or comments from members of the Redevelopment Agency?
Second.
Vote? That is unanimous. Water District, I'm not aware of any revisions to the Water District Agenda. Item 3 is the Consent Calendar. Second?
Second.
Seconded. May we vote? Unanimous. Item 4, we've already dealt with on the budget. Item 5, request to approve payments in the amount of $4,382,333 for replacement and make-up water obligations for the 2006, 2007 water year. Questions or comments from members of the Water District?
Second.
Seconded. May we vote? Unanimous. That concludes the Water District Agenda. We will now move to the City Council Agenda. And we have no... Yes, we do. We have one revision, which deals with the Item 22. We have an addition of the MOU.
We have revisions to Item 22 and 23. There was a small revision to the county fire contract.
I found it.
Okay. And then it was addition of the MOU, Item Number 22, a draft.
Okay. We will now move to Agenda Items 3, 4, 5, and 6. These are each public hearing items that deal with the consideration of objections that may be made tonight regarding the city's ability to remove and abate nuisances because of the condition of property, identify the four properties. Location is at 16521 Yucca Avenue, Victorville, 15760 Cottonwood Street, Victorville, 15562 Sixth Street, Victorville, and 15618 Topanga Road, Victorville. Now, before we go to the public hearing on this item, I think it would be appropriate, Mr. DeBortnasky, to set the stage for what legal proceedings are that bring it to this point and where we would go next, depending upon the vote of the council.
Thank you, Mayor Kobo. Essentially, what we have before us is the four items that basically are state-mandated public hearings on nuisance abatement issues. City code enforcement has gone out and reviewed these properties on numerous occasions and has taken note of certain violations of the Victorville Municipal Code. And what you have before you now is an opportunity for the property owners to, to the extent they feel appropriate, to raise any issues or concerns that they believe are appropriate that would therefore make you change your decision and not move forward with the abatement of the nuisance. If you accept their arguments, you can put this over. If you don't accept their arguments and they can't justify the conditions of the property, then we would request that you proceed and authorize the initiation of nuisance abatement proceedings.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
I have a question. Another question regarding the... ... five times. Is that in the ordinance or is it...
There are requirements, both in the California statutes and in the municipal code for Victorville to give notices to these properties. I don't believe on this type of action it's been five times, but they have been given adequate notice in accordance with all the statutes and the municipal code. And that's, if they're here, that's why they're here. They are given notice of this abatement hearing, and it's an opportunity for them to try and provide evidence and information regarding the reasons why they don't believe that we should proceed with the nuisance abatement.
I think also for the record, you probably should indicate what the abatement process itself is of and what the end result would be for the property owner.
Well, essentially, what we would have to do is, the first thing you would do is... The city clerk has already issued an order to show cause. We would then proceed with the filing of a complaint in a court of law that have another opportunity to essentially defend themselves. And essentially, then you lien the properties.
With that, I will open the public hearing on Items 3, 4, 5, and 6. I have a card for Item 3, which is the property located at 16521 Yucca Avenue. The card is from Guy L. Rita.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have received notices regarding the property. I have...
Could you pull the microphone over just a minute?
Okay. I have received notices regarding the property. I have gone out on several occasions and secured the property. I have invested $14,000 to repair the roof on the property. I've lost $8,000 from a contractor who didn't go out and do the work. I'm currently, now that I have a bin out at the property, I have completely cleaned out the property. I'm right now working on getting the grounds cleaned up. And I do intend to have the property occupied. I do have a tenant actually waiting to go into the property. But I'm here because I'm requesting a little more time so that I can go out and complete that task on the property.
Well, the sole goal of these proceedings is to get the property cleaned up and hopefully back into a productive use. And although I can't speak for the other members of the council, if you are in fact moving forward to solve the problem, I don't think it makes sense for us to become aggressive in terms of the enforcement action. Council, how would you feel about continuing Item 3 and asking our code enforcement folks to go take another look and come back and talk to us in a couple of weeks? At the conclusion of the public hearing, that's what we will do on yours, Item 3. There'll be a motion by one of us to continue this item for two weeks to the next regularly-scheduled council meeting. And that'll give us all an opportunity to see where we're at.
Thank you.
All right? I have a card for Item Number 4. That property is 15760 Cottonwood Street. And I have a card from Ms. Nojosa, if I'm pronouncing it correct.
My name is Sanayde Nojosa. I'm not what you would call the owner of the home right now. My godmother willed me these two homes, one on River Street and one on Cottonwood. And I'm going through probate, going to court on a civil case. The homes were... The person who bought the home, who says that they bought the home forged signatures, the people who were the owners of the home have passed away. So basically, they've stolen the houses from me. The one house on Victorville I didn't know had burned. I had my husband go out and cover up the doors and the windows. We were getting ready to go and clean up the yard and stuff. The only reason that I know is because the attorney sent me a letter that was sent out to the owner of the home, which is Mr. Eric Lee. But I do have interest in the home because I grew up there. And it was willed to me, and I'm trying to get it back to me. That's all I can say.
What is the status of the probate court proceeding, if you know?
I just went to court last month. I have to go again July 23rd on the probate. We're still going through it. I've been going through it since 2006.
Well, it would seem to me if you're willing to provide us the probate code case number so that we... It's a matter of public record, so we can- so that we, it's a matter of public record, so we can kind of get a feel for the progress. If in fact, you are going to end up being the owner and take necessary steps to, to resolve this, again, I don't know that it makes any sense for us to be particularly aggressive. How does the council feel about that?
A question, so that, is the house vacant?
The house is vacant.
Nobody else owns it?
Yes. Mr. Lee bought the home while I was going, there is a penancy on there. I have a civil case going. I have the probate going. And I'm just waiting to find out.
How did you end up with a notice if the owner?
It was sent to the attorney's office, and the attorney forwarded it on to me, which you...
No, no, that's fine. I'm kind of curious why you got the notice.
Well, let me see. The letter from the attorney says, "Dear Ms. Nojosa, I'm close for your information and records. Please find a letter dated April 10th, 2008, from the City of Victorville that was sent certified mail to our office. Thank you for your courtesy in regards to this matter." And it's, this is the order to abate the public nuisance. And it was addressed to Mr. Eric Lee. He lives in Fontana, but he hasn't done anything at all with the house. I went out, I checked, and I thought to myself, well, he's not doing anything about it. Obviously, he doesn't care about it. I do. I went out, we've covered up the windows and the doors. We were getting ready to go out and clean up the yard and do whatever we have to do so that it doesn't get abated.
I know a lot of folks down there that drew special attachment to.
Very much.
Old Town and E Street.
Well, I think if she's in the probate process and she has enough interest and concern to be here tonight, I think continuing it a couple of weeks, that way our code enforcement folks can go take a look, fresh look at it. If you could call the city clerk tomorrow and provide her with the case number so that we can find out where you are in the legal process in the probate court, since there's any opposition on the council for that. Then as with the gentleman before you, we will continue item four, the abatement proceedings on 15760 Cottonwood Street to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight, 7:00 PM, these chambers.
Thank you.
Those are the only cards I have indicating a request to speak to the council under items three, four, five, or six, the abatement proceedings for the properties that I previously identified. Is there anyone in the audience who did not turn in a card, who intended to speak to the city council under items three, four, five, or six? Not, I would close all four public hearings. I would move that items three and four be continued for two weeks to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. And I would move that the abatement proceedings on five and six, which are the properties at 15562 Sixth Street, Victorville, and 15618 Topanga Road, Victorville, be authorized and for staff to proceed. It's been moved and seconded, may we vote?
And I need the secondor. Okay, Bob Hunter, got it.
We will now go to items seven, eight, and nine. Seven consists of items A through H. Item eight is A through C. And item nine is A and B. In each instance, these deal with resolutions which, if adopted, would establish and confirm assessments for landscape areas and for drainage areas, for the citywide one landscape maintenance assessment district, Eagle Ranch, the Brentwood Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number three, Old Town Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number four, this divert assessment district number five, citywide two landscape maintenance assessment district, Talon Ranch Landscape Maintenance District, West Creek Landscape Maintenance District, citywide drainage facilities assessment district number one, maintenance and drainage for landscape areas into this divert drainage facilities assessment district number two, the West Creek Drainage Facility Assessment District number three, the assessment for park and landscape areas in maintenance assessment district number one, and the assessment district number two. All of those will be opened as public hearings and held at one time if that is satisfactory to the city attorney.
It is appropriate.
Questions or comments from the members of the council before I open the public hearing? Hearing that, I open the public hearings on items seven, eight, and nine for the purpose of considering the assessments for the various project areas that I have just identified. Anyone, I have no cards. Anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council under agenda items seven, eight, or nine? Hearing that, I will close the public hearings on seven, eight, and nine, request a motion, one motion for all three agenda items, subparts included. Moved and seconded. That's unanimous. Agenda item 10 is the consent calendar. These items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal. Moved and seconded, may we vote? Unanimous. Item 11, proposed resolution 08102, which if adopted, strike that. We've already done agenda item number 11, the budget. Item 12 is request to appropriate an additional $89,750 for contract services required by the finance department in conjunction with the audit for fiscal year June 30th, '07. Question or comments from members of the council? Unanimous. Agenda items 14A, B, and C, again, will be dealt with with one motion. These are resolutions that, if adopted, deal with the establishment of the municipal election to be held November 4th, 2008, the consolidation of our election with the countywide election, and the setting of the appropriate notices for that election. Questions or comments from members of the council? And I will ask for a motion on 14A, B, and C.
Second.
Seconded, may we vote? I thought the three incumbents would jump to make the motion on upcoming election.
Mayor Colwell, you skipped item 13. I'm not sure if the computer's letting you do that, but...
I didn't want to do it. Can we vote?
Did we?
On which one, 13?
No, on 14A, B, and C.
We did.
We did.
We are, we're going to get the screen. I'm getting a crick in my neck having to turn around and look at this thing.
I know they're working on it.
How much did we pay for this system?
Too much. A lot. A lot.
Get a little mini screen in the corner here.
Why don't we go back to buttons?
Guest of the vendor, he better be here at the next city council meeting.
Let's go back to the buttons.
We'll go back to item 13, discussion and possible action regarding an increase in the transient occupancy tax, otherwise known as the bed tax. Questions or comments from members of the council?
I have, I have a comment. I called a friend of ours that we all know that has a couple hotels in our city, excuse me. And I think this would be more of a heartache for him right now. Business is very, very slow. And by adding an additional bed tax, for the individual that stays there would put a hardship on him, having a hard time. I think, I think this is not the right time to have any kind of tax put on anyone. That's my comment.
Further questions or comments?
I've talked to two of the more significant hotel owners in the community, and they both recommended that we increase their bed tax for the outreach and the services that we can perform with that and the things that we do with the chamber. They're very happy with. Statistics have shown that this is one of the lowest bed tax cities in the entire state. And indeed, we haven't even touched this bed tax in almost 15 years. It's passed on. It's, it's, it's the best kind of tax with respect to local government in that, in that the outsiders using the hotel are the ones paying the tax. In this case, it's not driving anybody away in terms of entertainment venues or other. Most of the business that we have here is in fact that. It's people coming in from outside either to interact with our SCLA out there or some of the other growth that we have in the community. I think it's an appropriate moment to do it. I think that it's, it's net harmless to the business, the local businesses, because it is passed on. And, but it does a net benefit in the sense of the amount of relationships that we have with our three chambers. Some of the things that we have them do is to interact with the small businesses to make sure that they survive in these economic, tough economic times. And I think the statistics show they're doing a pretty good job. All three chambers or memberships are increasing in spite of the slowdown in the economy. And no small part, part of that is that they're constantly using that resource that we have put into their programs to help the, the small businesses succeed. So I would urge this council to support this increase at this time.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have some. I put the item on the agenda, so I think it's something we need to look at. Hisparia raised theirs, we're at 7%. I believe Hisparia raised theirs to about 10. I believe Barstow's raised theirs to 12. Surrounding cities have higher occupancy taxes than we do. I've talked to several of the owners of the, of the complexes here in town who welcome the tax if we were to use it for some of the things we've been using it for now, which is the chambers of commerce, but also looking at using some of that tax for law enforcement to help with the issues that surround some of the hotels in the area, which I don't have a problem with, and it's something we need to look at. But we have not raised this tax for, I don't know, Mr. Roberts, maybe you can tell me, but I don't remember the last time. I don't think it's been addressed since I've been on the council. That's been 12 years. And as Mr. Rothschild mentioned, this tax, and Mr. Colwell, this tax does not come from the citizens of this community. This tax typically comes from those that transient through or travel through our community and stay at our hotels and use our facilities, our streets, and all the other facilities, including the fire department, police department, and really don't pay for that. So they're paying for those services by staying at those hotels, plus the business of the, of the chambers benefiting our community, bring more business. So I think it's a time we need to look at it at least and see if that's what we need to do. I believe our chambers are looking at it right now, and it's a good time to look at it. So that's why I brought it forward to discuss it.
Other questions?
I think it's worth looking at, at the issue and getting all the information with what the other cities are doing and where we're at in regard. I also, you know, have a feeling about the economy and people losing jobs, but you're right, it's, it's the outside folks that are using it. But sometimes, you know, we're not sure if those hotels were, were like a few months ago or last year when they were almost capacity all the time. I'm not sure where they're at now. But it would be worth looking at.
How long would it take to get a report back, Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Mayor, staff can have a report ready to go in 30 days. We will identify currently the revenues generated from our tax. We'll identify what other surrounding cities are, and we'll provide a description of what the process would be and the timing in order to look at adopting a proposed tax and the process, I believe, is taken to the voters for approval.
Mayor Colwell, may I suggest, if the 30-day timeframe works, your key dates that you're looking for, if you were going to consider an increase, and you wanted to do it, you'd be looking at the November 4th election. In order to do that, you have to get it on the ballot by August 8th. So you'd have to have an ordinance adopted prior to August 8th in order to be able to process any proposed increase in the tax.
Bed tax is voter approved?
It is, subject to Prop 62.
That's how long it's been since we've had this for us.
Mayor, if I might ask Mr. Roberts to also, so we don't reinvent the wheel, speak with the chamber and see what they've done. I believe they've done a lot of work. Mr. Roberts, Mr. Roberts can probably shed some light on that and so we don't have to go through the process that they've already gone through, see what they've had, what communications they've had with everyone else in the community and all the hotels, if you would.
Will do.
Would we also make a list of the various code enforcement, the fire departments, all their interactions with the hotels on an annual basis, you know, as part of that justification as well? Clearly, there's a consensus to have this item further reviewed and brought back to us in 30 days. This is not a public hearing item, but I'll give you an opportunity to say a few words if you have some concern about this.
My name is Shannon Plotner, and I'm the director of sales for the Comfort Suites and also the Hotel Extended Studio. Hemet Shatrala, as you know, Mayor, owns three of the major hotels in Victorville. And I do believe he would oppose this if he had a chance to even know about it. I don't know that he reads these type things all the time.
He knows about it.
He does, okay.
Yes, both of them.
And you did speak with him, okay then. And as you guys know, I'm sure you're familiar, this is not a, a city that, that everyone just comes here to vacation on. This is a business-oriented city. A lot of the, the people that do stay in our hotels are with local businesses, including the ones we're trying to bring here and potentially any in the future. And I just think we should probably think about this a little bit more, so.
Well, I think that's the spirit of the discussion, is that we don't have a lot of information. I've been on this council for a long time. I can't remember the last time we've discussed it. But this item's going to be continued to the first, to the second regularly scheduled council meeting in July, a month from now. And we'll see what kind of information we get back from the staff. In the meantime, you and your employer are certainly encouraged to provide us with any data or information or thoughts that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will go to item 19, which is request to approve the construction management agreement with Benham DB Inc., which would cost the construction of the Southern California Legis... That's the one we've already done. That's right, we've done 19.
Or so. Item 15.
15.
I'm lost. Well, I was going to skip over 15 and keep it for the last. Why? That, you know, if you have the gavel, you get to do that. All right. Clearly, that person has friends on the council. Item 15 is a contract with Rose Rainey for the grumpy golfer. I think that Mr. Hunter and Mr. Rothschild were involved in that process. Do you have any questions, comments, or thoughts?
Well, I think the process was very fair. We went out for RFPs. There was, there was two we interviewed. During the process, we determined that there was additional information I believe we needed from the other applicant. Mrs. Hester went out and obtained that information and gave us an opportunity to give an apples for apples comparison. Without a doubt, Ms. Rainey's proposal and ideas were top of the list and came out, came out the top, so, Mr. Rothschild?
I concur. I couldn't add anything more. It screened well, and she fielded it well. She didn't take it for granted just because she's been around serving.
That's a good thing.
Von Hester, you have to live with the results of this vote. Do you have any thoughts or recommendations?
I have a question, because it says the staff that's going to finalize the contract. So contract that we're approving is not finalized yet, recommending for approval. Going to get another one back, or?
Councilman Cabral's staff is just recommending that the, based upon the selection process, that the council select the grumpy golfer as the number one proposer. And then if that is the, if that is the decision of the city council, then we will prepare the contract documents and bring them back to council for approval.
Is there a motion? Moved and seconded, may we vote? Moved in second, and may we vote? Ananmas. Don't embarrass the city with your new contract. Item 20?
Actually, we're at 16 now.
How do we get out of sync? Item 16, request to award the contract to Cooley Construction for the low bid price $42,230,000 for the autorization facility grading and utilities, EDA grant number 074905691. Questions or comments? Moved in second, may we vote? Ananmas, for the fourth time, I will try to go to Agenda item 20. Request to approve an additional appropriation of $2,300,000 from bond proceeds fund 76944 for contract services in connection with the Victorville II hybrid power plant. Questions or comments from members of the council?
I have one question. Would this be considered like a change order to a item that we've approved for $5 million in... Back in 2005?
Councilwoman Almond, it is not a change order. It is an adjustment to the budget. When the high-desert power partner submitted an initial budget to the city, which recollection is correct, was two years ago. At that time, that was their estimate of the cost to go through the permitting process for Victorville Number 2. The cost of the permitting process has gone higher. There have been some delays to the process, primarily due to the environmental challenge launched by the union group Cure California Utilities for Reliable Energy, which is really just looking to obtain special favor from the project. So that has caused substantial additional legal fees to deal with that lawsuit. And then also, there have been property acquisitions that were not included in the original budget. The original budget only identified simply the cost of the permitting process.
Further questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order? Or second? Second, may we vote? Ananmas, item 21, request to approve an additional appropriation for services in connection with the Sterling Airport's disposition and development agreement, DDA, the amount of $1,766,634, and the Sterling operations and maintenance contract, ONM, $240,158. Questions or comments? Is there a second? Vote? That is unanimous. 22, a memorandum of understanding with the Victorville Professional Firefighters, the MOU to be provided at the city council meeting. I understand Mr. Doug Robinson, Deputy City Manager, will make a presentation on this.
I'll cover that out, Mr. Mayor. There is before you a memorandum of understanding between the City of Victorville and the Victorville Professional Firefighters, VPF. This MOU is a result of the city council meeting, which occurred last Monday, which I think was the 9th, wherein the city determined the components to be provided in the memorandum of understanding with VPF. Those items identified by the city council have been included in this MOU, and it is drafted to reflect those actions. Those items that the council walked through were presented to VPF, and VPF has indicated acceptance of those items and is prepared to move forward with the execution of the MOU. Staff would recommend approval.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Roberts? Oh, I'm sorry. There was consensus from the firefighters that this would be signed and approved?
In accordance with, Councilwoman Almond, in accordance with the current MOU with VPF, the city is required to conduct all communications with the elected officers of VPF. And so our conversations have been with the officially designated officers of VPF, and they have corresponded with us that they are prepared to move forward and approve the MOU as presented to you tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, is there a cost associated with the items in the memorandum of understanding? And if so, have those costs been quantified?
There are costs associated with the items that were identified by the city council at the previous meeting to be provided. I'm looking for help. Do we... Have we identified the additional costs associated with the additional items approved by city council at the meeting on the 9th?
All the rate sheets back from each of the individual members as to what they're selecting, all those costs will be included in the next year's fiscal.
Is there an order of magnitude?
Provided estimated costs on all the different items, yes. If your question is, what was the difference from what was submitted originally to what council authorized additionally? Is that your question, what the amount was?
When are you going to have that cost?
Well, we provided it to you. I just don't have it in front of me because I need for each of the members to come back.
That they're working complete.
That's correct. That's what was provided to you last Monday, I believe, to the tune of half a million.
That'll change, right?
Perhaps. That could change if some of the members don't choose to take the cash payout and prefer to choose some of the other options. So until each of the members determine on their... I call it a rate sheet. We're going to be submitting a form to each of them, telling them what they have access to. They're going to then determine what it is they're going to choose. Until we receive those forms back, we won't know the actual individual costs. All costs, though, will be provided in the next year's fiscal budget. They'll be submitted, I believe, within a month to council.
Okay, the issue before the council is the memorandum of understanding, which apparently has been negotiated with the fire department, union officials. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council? Not a motion would be in order? Second, may we vote? Ananmas, item 24, claims against the city. Claim number 0811, Dora Land. 23. Request to approve the proposed contract with San Bernardino County Fire with revisions to the contract.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you were provided with a contract as part of the agenda. There is before you a revised contract. It has a very minor revision. It is one that is very positive, one that the council indicated at its meeting on the 9th that they would be interested in staff pursuing with the county of San Bernardino. That revision provides for the allowance of employees that have a sick leave balance, to be able to transfer that sick leave balance into the county's medical retirement savings account program. Following our meeting with the city council on the 9th, we approached the county on that item, and they were able to accommodate that requested change, and that is the revision that has been made to the contract before you. The contract that is before you, with that minor revision and all of the other provisions are the same, as presented as part of your agenda package. The annual cost within the contract provided by the county is identical to the annual cost presented to the city in the proposal submitted by the county and voted on by the city council. The cost for annual fire suppression and paramedic services is identical to that in the proposal, and the one-time cost is the same as that identified within the proposal. The additional item not considered by city council was the air rescue firefighting proposal. That portion of the proposal has gone through extensive review and discussion between our airport staff and our Director of the Airport, Peter Soderquist. And that proposal meets all of the necessary requirements of the airport to conduct its activities in accordance with the FAA-required air rescue firefighting services. And the cost for that portion has actually gone down from that which was included in the original proposal from the county. And our Director of Airport, SCLA, Peter Soderquist, is recommending approval of the county contract with respect to the air rescue firefighting services for SCLA.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
I had some questions, and I went over those with Doug. And I'd just like to, you know, hear from Doug, see if some of those were solved or negotiated.
Thank you, Councilman Cabral. The major issue that we had discussed was with regard to callback in the event that engines leave the City of Victorville to go to a fire, as we currently do now. If one of the local agencies, as you know very well, requests, we will send assistance. And we have discussed that with County Fire, myself, as well as interim Fire Chief Dave Leif. And they are under the full understanding of what our expectations are as far as continuing the current level of service. And they are very agreeable to that. And we're working on a side letter to just simply clarify that issue that they're more than willing to sign.
The other one was the one on staffing at SC.
Staffing at SCLA, yes. I have had conversations with Deputy Chief for County Fire, and he is completely understands that when they go from a level, I believe it's C, to a D or an E, that that includes five people on duty at that time. Those are callbacks. And then in addition, on standby, that they... Although there may be one or two very small areas for a standby at SCLA, most of the areas at SCLA, due to the time requirement to get to the center of the runway, would have to be staffed using overtime hours, yes.
Further questions or comments?
I have a question. On the very bottom on number 10, it says the district will endeavor to maintain a minimum of three ALS units within the city. Is that the one? Okay. Is that what you were answering, Doug?
Yes, that was the first item that I talked about, yes. There are times that currently under City Fire, we do end up sending engines to other communities, sometimes nearby, sometimes far away. And they've agreed that they will mirror our current practice, that we maintain the current level of service.
I have one more issue on hazmat. Are we in the City of Victorville going to maintain the COUPA along with the hazmat?
Yes, we are. The COUPA stays with the city at this time?
Stays with the city.
Yes, it does. The County Fire will provide the response to a hazmat incident as our current city firefighters do. If there's a hazmat incident, firefighters respond and take care of the incident. But the administrative side, the COUPA side, will stay with the city.
Stays with the city.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order?
Well, can I just make a comment before we make a motion? When this issue came up several weeks ago, and I voted no for the proposal, it was not only because the numbers that, in my opinion, you know, I can understand. I've been trying to... I came in today again and went over the session with these guys. But it was the fact that you've had a fire department here officially for 82 years, since 1926, and even beyond that, before it became a fire district in 1926, you've had a fire department here probably from the turn of the century, 1905. We have records of a volunteer fire department, Victorville Fire Department, Victorville Volunteer Fire Department. And so it's been a... It's been a long-running operation, starting, like I mentioned before, not only the transition from the volunteers into the professional fire department, in my ties personally, because of the 21 years that I was the fire chief here. So it's kind of emotional with me also. And I don't think anybody... The firefighters over here from the county, I don't think you blame me for that because we all share the same values. I don't have a problem with County Fire, and I've had discussions with Chief Denon, Ray Chief, and you have a great organization. I just had a problem with kind of the process or what that's on the process, how it came about. And I didn't think that for $38,000, which is the difference that... And we spend today, we spend millions of dollars, and for $38,000, that we would impact the lives of a fire department and the tradition, the culture of a fire department. But it was done. And as I said in the paper, I respect this 3-2 vote, and I'll respect that vote. That's democracy in action. I want to thank the firefighters from Victorville, who not only served with me all those years, but we have dedicated their lives. I want to thank their families for the sacrifices that they've endured throughout all those years. We've just had going on strike teams and all these other things that we do, and you're now with your families. I'd like to thank you for that service. I also want to tell you that I'll never forget you, and that I'll be there with you, go to the county, then I'll be there with you guys. And I intend to vote yes for the contract because I think it's fair to Chief Denon that he get a 5-0 vote here for that. Not that I'm saying I'm okay with what happened. I'm saying that they're going to be our fire department. The Victorville Fire Department, the personnel that are transferring over will be the county fire department, but they'll be serving the City of Victorville. And so you would never want to hire a fire chief without a 5-0 vote and give that comfort. So I'm going to vote for the contract.
Almond?
I couldn't have said it any better. And I agree with Rudy. I did vote no, but because of what Rudy said, I will vote yes tonight.
Well, I hadn't planned to comment, but, you know, I just want to say that I appreciate Rudy's comments about it being emotional. He dedicated his whole life to the fire service. He, in large measure, brought the department to where it is. I have emotional ties, as does Rudy. The conversion of a volunteer, an all-volunteer fire department, started in my living room on a Saturday morning in my first term as the mayor, when the all-volunteer fire department, a vast majority of them, came to me and said, "We want to be a part of the city. We want to have a full-time professional fire department." We set in motion a series of events that resulted in that happening. I am very proud of that department. That department has grown, matured, and become as good a fire department as you could ever have. I was instrumental in making the decision to have Rudy become our fire chief. He led that department to new heights and to new levels of professionalism. I know that there's a big chunk of Rudy rooted in that fire department. So I understand the emotional part. It's somewhat emotional for me. But we were asked to make a tough decision, and this council did not jump into that decision. We spent months, literally months, going through the analytical process. And we had input from all sources, including the fire department, the union, and our internal staff, and others. And while every decision has its flaws, I mean, there's nothing in this process that ever is 100% perfect. I'm satisfied that it was as deliberative and honest as it could possibly be. Fortunately, there's been discussion about whether there were other motives or other agendas. Mind everyone that the fire department members ask us, join with them in a study for paramedic services. That was what we did. And we were asked to develop several alternatives, one of which was to look at the county contract. was to look at the county contract. I think nobody on this council or our staff needs to take umbrage at the process. It was a sound process. We may not all agree with the outcome, but there's nothing in the process that was smoke and mirrors or hidden agendas or anything else, as far as I can tell. Rudy was involved in the process. The fire department had representatives, the union had representatives. I think it was a good process. While we may differ with the ultimate decision, it's a decision that occurred in public with all of the public dialogue that we could possibly get. I hate to see the fire department leave. I hate to see the firemen leave, but analyze the reason that we traveled this path, which was to enhance public safety by adding the paramedics as quickly as we could. I feel very comfortable with the decision. It's a sad decision, but I feel comfortable with the decision. Issue before the council is the contract, Agenda item number twenty-three. If there are no other questions or comments, a motion would be in order.
I have one more. I'm going to second the motion, but there was a comment by Chief Becker, and it really kind of hurt my feelings because even though I don't have the strong, deep relationship that Rudy had, still, as a teacher, this thirty-three-year high school teacher in this community, very many, quite a few of the firemen came to my classes, a number of battalion commanders and everything else. So my decision about switching over to the county contract was a very difficult one. And quite frankly, in my twenty years in this council, this has probably been the most difficult decision I had to make, sitting up here, and I had to be, I really had to move my feelings aside to do that. And so when I sat down that evening to make that decision, I had, I was still vacillating back and forth as to which way to go, how fast to implement the paramedic program. And the bottom line was that we were here to look at the paramedic program and implement it as fast as we can because it was an important five-o decision, that that was a very important service that we needed to put in place as quickly as we could. The fact that the contract came out to be relatively equal was kind of incidental to the whole issue. So for my vote, it came down to setting my feelings aside of keeping the Victorville Fire Department in place and, in fact, giving the services to this community in a little bit stronger fashion with the potential for growth. And one of the things that I was looking at too, that I considered, was the opportunities in the individual firemen, whether they wanted to recognize it or not. The fact is that a much larger bureaucracy like that has a lot more promotion and growth aspects to it, career aspects, if you will, than some of your partners sitting there next to you with the same age, and one of you is a little bit higher than the other one, and you're bumping into each other, and you're not going anywhere until you both retire. I think here's an opportunity for the younger folks to get out there and find some of those successes in that division. And as far as the professionalism of the county fire department, I checked with the Hesperium and, after they transferred two of them at least, and two Atlanta firemen, and all four of them said the same. They had concerns that when they first happened, but as time went on and they began embedding into the county system, they felt very good about it, and it was the proper decision in hindsight. So we sit here now to make that motion, and I am seconding the motion this evening.
One more comment? Can I make one?
Certainly.
And I almost forgot a very, very important part, is that as I talk to the firefighters, the ones that were saying, yeah, it's okay, we'll go, there's still some that, you know, they've been impacted, and they'll, somebody made a comment, it may take five years to get over it. Some people may never get over it. It's an impact on your life, your professional career. Be that much as it may. The word that I got back from the firefighters, and I'd like to commend Chief Denon for that, is that they were, they have been treated extremely well with open R by the County Fire, and I appreciate that. Also, your HR department has been very helpful to them, getting information to them, and they are praised highly, so I just want to make sure you take that back to them. And thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The only comment I have is, there's nothing I can say to make anybody feel better or change anybody's mind of the reason I voted the way I did. No one will believe what I say because they've all got their minds set up. I voted for a specific reason, and that's because I'm voted in this community to do a job, and that's to protect the community. Our whole thing on this was getting paramedic programs going. I can't justify putting a paramedic at one engine and not at another engine. I cannot go out and tell the public, you're more important in one area of town than the other area of town. I cannot wait five years for paramedics to be in our city. I know it's hard to understand right now, but the firefighters are going to an excellent organization. They've got a great chief. They've got great opportunities for vertical movement. They've got great opportunities to go to different divisions. They may not see that right now, but I think in a very short period of time, they're going to see what opportunities they do have. I hate to see the firefighters leave the city. I honestly do. And I know some of them are staying. A lot of them are staying, actually. I hate to see them leave. I hate to see the fire department leave. But I have to decide what's best for this community. And what's best for this community is having paramedics on our fire engines right now, as soon as we can get them, and that's been my whole thing. It's also having the equipment on our trucks that we have not had, and that's not, that's not anything against the former fire chief, but something wasn't done right. When I have fire extinguishers in a city that are out of date for ten years, I've got questions to ask, what happened? And that's not going to happen with the department we have coming in. Now, I don't know what happened, but I want to make sure our firefighters have the best equipment in the entire High Desert. I want to make sure we have the best firefighters, and I want to make sure our citizens are taken care of. That is the bottom line for my vote.
Other questions or comments? You have a motion and a second, may we vote? Anamis?
Mayor, may I make a comment? This is a minor point, however, I think it needs clarification because it was misreported within the press. The Victorville Fire Department is not being disbanded. Victorville Fire Department still exists. The fire stations and the equipment remain the property of the City of Victorville. We are contracting with the county for fire suppression, paramedic, and air rescue firefighting services. The reason this is an important point is that we are retaining a highly dedicated professional staff, some of whom are in the room tonight. I can tell you with the discussions that we have had, and this is true also with all of the firefighters, that they are absolutely committed and will remain committed to the city in carrying out the policies that have been set forth by this city, which is to provide the maximum level of protection for our citizens.
Item twenty-four, claims against the city. Claim oh-eight-eleven, Dora Land, Inc., and oh-eight-twelve, Nancy Swank. I move that those be denied, referred to staff for further processing. Vote? Council reports. Councilman Macario? Almond? Rothschild? Hunter? I have none. Mr. Roberts?
None.
I will now invite the council and appropriate staff into closed session for the two items that are enumerated in the agenda, one dealing with real property negotiations, and the other one with litigation involving Barmac Sandbag.
Mayor Caldwell, I do not need the closed session on the second item, only on the first item.
Okay, then we'll only go in on one item. It is not anticipated that when we complete the closed session that there will be any reportable action. I cannot guarantee that. If you want to wait in the audience until we complete the closed session, you're welcome to do so. If you want to leave and go watch ESPN rake the Lakers over the Coles for their loss, and we come out and this room is empty, we will not be offended. So thank you all for being here, and this meeting will stand adjourned once we conclude the closed session. Come out of closed session. There are no reportable actions as a result of the closed session. This council meeting stands adjourned. See you Friday.